All right, it's showtime.
Hi, welcome. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 25, 2025. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is the extension.
Yes, we had a request for an extension, appeal number 2024-023 for Riverhead Property LLC, 230 West Main Street in Riverhead. The appeal was granted originally September 12, 2024, with an expiration date of September 12, 2025. So they are requesting their first one-year extension, thus expiring September 12 of 2026.
All right, somebody make the motion. All right, Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mr. Zoeski. Can't hear him. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Cethillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Yes, it's a list for Danny again.
I think Dan's volume's on now, Dan?
Dan?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes. We need it. Thank you. Extension has been granted, all right, next.
Next, we had correspondence from Elisa Phillips regarding appeal number 0934 dated June 11 of 2009, 1430 Waiting River Manor Road in Waiting River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-96-16, more specifically regarding a condition of the approval. So I circulated that to all the board members and you read the letter along with counsel. That's it.
That's it, go.
Next, we have a decision, appeal number 2025-033, CMA Mine LLC.
All right, this is an application submitted to the zoning board by the terms of stipulation of settlement entered into between the town and CMA mines. The stipulation also recited the process and the procedure for the matter to proceed before the zoning board, including the waiver of a public hearing before the board and record to be considered and determined by the zoning board. Our counsel has advised us that she has made diligent inquiry as to the matters recited above relating the zoning board and pursuant to the direction of the town attorney and special counsel, the zoning board will proceed with application to and determination of zoning officer Bergman and as full of application to zoning board together with consideration of CMA records submitted in support of its application seeking a letter of pre-existing use.
Second.
Bueno, Tonya.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And for the record, there was a voluminous record. All right, as to the board's conclusion and determination, the board has carefully reviewed and considered the record in connection with the appeal as well as the findings that set forth above. If this review, this careful review, one, the zoning board denies that portion of the applicant's appeal challenging the termination of the zoning officer to it that evidence and record presented by the applicant fails to establish a manifest intent or support a letter of pre-existing non-conforming use to mine site to a depth below the water table. Two, the zoning board denies that portion of applicant's appeal and that portion of the zoning officer's determination to grant or be interpreted to grant a letter of pre-existing non-conforming use to mine below the 14.984 acres and beyond the depth of mine limited to 30 feet. The zoning board determines that the record supports a letter of pre-existing non-conforming use for the site described as 14.984 acres and limited to a depth of mine to 30 feet. Based upon the foregoing, I move that this board hereby deny the appeal in its entirety.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mr. Zoeski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Cethillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That's it, termination, thank you. Heather?
So our first public hearing of the night is appeal number 2025-030, Ashok Patel, 305 West Main Street in Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-128-3-48, Peconic River Community Zoning for a proposed commercial building. Applicant requests experiences and/or relief from town code 301-162A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 50.8%, maximum permitted is 40%. 301-162B, where proposed open space native landscape area is 49.2%, minimum required is 50%. And 301-236A1, where proposed landscaped areas abutting land owned by Suffolk County vary in depth, with the narrowest depth being two feet four inches and the minimum depth required is 25 feet. And just for the record, I do have the affidavit of posting, mailing, and all of these certified receipts from the applicant's representatives. I believe they are on Zoom.
Yes.
Okay. Someone's supposed to be zooming?
Yep, we have Jeff and Marty Sunluiski on. If one of you wants to introduce yourselves for the record.
Yes, Jeff Sunluiski here, can you hear me?
Hold on, Justin?
Jeff.
No, no, excuse me, I'm not speaking through the screen. Justin? Can we get these guys on streaming up on the screen? Thank you, no, that's our man.
He's also zooming.
I don't want me turning around all the time talking to someone behind me. Where is he? Okay, go ahead and speak, sir.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay. Jeff Sunluiski here from Sunluiski Architects.
Excuse me, are you a lawyer?
Architect.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God, please state your name and address.
Yes, Jeff Sunluiski, 215 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York, Sunluiski Architects.
We gotta turn the volume up a little bit.
I can't hear.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Can you hear me good now?
Yes.
Put your hand down. You can put your hand down, you're sworn in.
Great. Okay, so to start out, in regards to this property, we did provide a list of handouts that I believe are circulated for your use. That contains five different documents, the current site plan, the current property survey, the aerial photo of the existing property condition, the aerial photo of the adjacent development at the 711 property, which is east of the property, and a sketch of a revised site plan for landscaping compliance and reduction of impervious surface. I'll go through the notes that I have in regards to the variances being sought and then we'll touch on that revised plan, which does come into play regarding some of the notes that I have. So, in regards to 301-162A impervious surface coverage, we are proposing, our current site plan proposes 50.8% with 40% being permitted. Notes that I have on this is that the current site development includes 15,405 square feet, which is 77.8% of impervious surface. That's as the site currently sits right now. This plan that we're proposing does decrease the impervious surface from the current amount down by more than one-third. The access driveway and the parking layout, which includes a double-loaded parking and the required loading and dumpster area accommodates for 12 cars, which is the minimum we would need based on the current layout of the building. That is a 12-car by 250 square foot, equaling 3,000 square foot. And the building is only 15.8% lot coverage, which is about half of the permitted building coverage of 30%. What we will talk about on the fifth document that I provided, which is the revised plan, is we have taken another look at the site. There's an opportunity to reduce the total from the proposed 15.8% lot coverage to 49.8%, which would still require variance, but we do have an alternative option just to reduce that impervious surface. And another side note is that, as we are aware, the town board is currently in the process of updating the impervious coverage in various zones in the town, which would include this zone. And this is due to percentages in the zoning chart that are basically impossible to achieve, given the site. So with that, I don't know if you want me to go through the other variance items that I have or discuss this first item first?
So you're proposing a 3,000-square-foot building, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, 3,000-square-foot facility.
And the existing building was what, at 2,000?
So, yes, so on the second page of the handout, we can actually go through this now, which is the, it's worth noting actually as part of this discussion, so the project owner, the owner of the property, received one of the blighted property notices back in January of 2025 because of the condition of the property and the buildings that were currently there. Prior to that, the existing building area that was on this property totaled roughly about 2,630 square feet, so just under the 3,000 square feet that we are proposing. And then the remainder of the property had over 12,000 square feet of existing hardscaped area, which is shown in the diagram of the second page of the handout, as well as the site survey that was provided for this property. So the facility that we would be proposing is about, is 3,000 square feet.
And has it been identified what's going inside this building?
So we have it as a 3,000-square-foot wet retail, which is divided equally into two 1,500-square-foot spaces that are mirrored. And there's, as far as we're aware from the property owner, there's no specific business or anything that's committed to being in this location. If it were to happen, he's just developing it as basically two 1,500-square-foot wet retail spaces.
Do you guys have any questions, Anne Marie?
You said that the prior buildings or structures that were knocked down, they totaled, I couldn't hear you. They totaled how many square feet? I thought I heard you say 2,600.
Yeah, so just rough calculation that we have based on the property survey, which was taken when the buildings were still in place, is that it totaled about 2,630 square feet between all three buildings that were on that property. And then we did, since we received the blighted property notice as part of the requirements of addressing that as soon as possible, we did receive a demolition permit through the town that encapsulated removal of those buildings down to the foundations at this point.
So the new building is going to be around 370 square feet larger than the old pre-existing buildings that were knocked down?
Yes, that would be correct, so it would be 3,000 square feet total.
Anne Marie, you have any comments now?
Yes, I do. So you're not claiming any vesting in the prior use or prior improvements of the property, are you?
In terms of the new development and replacing what was there?
Yeah, well, because you're reciting how much lot coverage there was. But the property was abandoned, the use was abandoned, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I believe in the staff report by Greg Bergman, and I don't want to get it wrong.
It's funny, because my name's on that staff report, Anne Marie.
What?
What?
Oh, it's your staff?
My staff report.
So Heather, I thought the prior square footage of the buildings were, hold on, let me look at my notes.
3,000.
I thought it was 1,999?
I don't know if I listed it on there.
So just to confirm, when you're giving the square footage of 2,600 square feet, that was simply for the structures on the property?
That is correct, yes.
I didn't list the square footage on there. I listed the buildings, I described the buildings, and I have the letter of pre-existing use on there, but I didn't cite the specific square footage of all the buildings that were there.
How many parking spots are there going to be?
So we have calculated for 12 parking spots, which based on the 3,000-square-foot building size and the parking calculation would be the minimum that would be required on that site.
12 was the minimum?
Yes.
If you reduce the size of the building, would it be possible to meet the impervious surface coverage?
So actually, on the, what we were looking at with the last page of the handout, because with the project owner, with it being a very tight site to begin with, where we have the building placed currently on the site plan is about midway through the depth of the property, which achieves the town-required setbacks of 15 feet for the side yard setbacks. So we're keeping it within that area. It's, the way we were looking at it with the property owner is that that would be about the minimum square footage per unit that he would be looking to use. But we did run a calculation on that last page of the handout where we could reclaim some areas of the site that would become additional landscaped area that would get us closer to the, being within the percentage of the maximum 40%. But we would really have to drastically reduce both the size of the building and as well as possibly reduce up to four parking spaces from the parking calculation in order to probably even come close to meeting what the 40% requirement is for the impervious coverage, because it is a very narrow site, it's only 83 feet at the street front. And where we situated the building, it's about a 90-foot width of the property. And beyond that is what's classified as a required DEC area that we are not allowed to develop in, so we're making sure to stay out of that. So I, whether Marty has any ideas on this or not, I think that we went with a minimum building size that would work with what he intends to develop there, as well as maintaining what the town would require for the parking.
Is there anyone in the audience or anyone on streaming that would like to be heard on this variance?
Yeah, I'd like to sound in.
I do solemnly swear to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God, state your name and address, Marty.
I do, Martin Sunluiski, 215 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead. I just think that before we take comment, maybe Jeff could highlight the next two appeals, also with our notes on those two appeals.
Anybody have any comments? Does he, Mr. Sunluiski, do you have a comment on this application?
Yeah, I think there are two more, the other two items of the appeal Jeff has comments on also.
The other variances.
Okay. Well, please comment.
Sure, okay, yes, because it does relate to the first variance being sought. So the next variance we're looking at is 301-162B, which is the minimum 50% landscaped area. So looking back at the plan, because in the current site plan that we have submitted, we're about at 49.2% proposed, which is just barely under the 50% requirement. If we were to go with the alternate site plan, which is the fifth page of the handout that has the markups, bringing the impervious surface slightly down from the previous amount, we would actually be able to achieve the 50% minimum landscaped area, because we'd be adding enough square footage of additional landscaped area, both at the front entrance access off of West Main Street, as well as behind the dumpster area, we'd be able to, without making any changes to the total amount of parking or the building itself. In making that change, we would gain enough landscaped area to put us over the 50% requirement. And with that, it would actually alleviate the requirement for a variance for the 50% landscaped area. And then the third variance that we are seeking is 301-236A1, and that is the 25-foot minimum side yard buffer, which is a result of the Suffolk County-owned property that is east of this property. And the items that I'd like to note in regards to that, obviously because this site is so narrow that a 25-foot buffer from that property line would very much narrow the site to the point where both parking and any new facility or building would really just not be feasible. So with the existing buffer setback at the moment, the parking area that we have shown in our site plan is basically per the existing established development. When you look at the existing site conditions page of the handout, you can see that the, both the building and the hardscaped area of the site go almost right up to the east property line. I believe it scales out as two foot six away from the property line currently. So that was the basis for our line that we were holding for only the parking. The existing building, as I mentioned, was, before demolition, was two foot six from the property line. And with what we are proposing now, it would be located at a minimum 15 feet from the property line, which would meet the side yard setbacks. And at the furthest point of the building, which would be the southeast corner of the building, it would increase to almost 18 feet from the property line. Another item I'd like to note is that the property that is east of the Suffolk County-owned land, which is now the 711 property that was developed, we did not foil the file on this, but just when you look at the, what I believe is the fourth page of the handout, you can see that in yellow is the Suffolk County-owned property, which presents the buffer. Our site is the area in red. And east of that being the 711 property, it appears that the development of that property, both parking and the building itself, seems to encroach somewhere around maybe 10 to 15 feet from that property line of the Suffolk County-owned property, which I would assume presents a similar circumstances with the 25-foot buffer. And aside from that, we would be, as part of our landscaping, obviously, we have a certain amount of buffer area that we would be providing along that eastern property line. But with that Suffolk County-owned property as it stands right now, it does appear to be mostly of just an overgrown and neglected area. We would obviously improve on that with the area that we have, that we're providing along our eastern property line, which would be still treated as a landscape buffer. But with what we are proposing currently with the site plan, our narrowest point along that property line would be about two foot four inches, which would be at the northeast corner of the site where the access is to West Main Street. But that would gradually increase to about an 18-foot setback at the new building. And then we would maintain the 25-foot setback buffer area that is within the DEC-regulated area. So it's just, those are the notes that I have regarding the two other variances. So again, looking at the last page of the handout, if we were to make some slight changes to the landscaped area, I think we would eliminate the need for a variance on the second variance item for the 50%. But we still have to obviously seek the variance for the 25-foot buffer and for the impervious surface coverage. Only we would be able to decrease the surface coverage slightly with the alternate layout.
So are you proposing the area behind the dumpster, which measures two feet by eight feet, as part of a landscaped area?
Well, just as, to remove that from, we could scale down the size of that pad that would add into the impervious surface area. For this size facility, it wouldn't be necessary to have a larger pad there. So we could, just looking at areas that we could reclaim even minimal amounts of square footage, because we were, you know, we're trying to reduce the impervious area as much as possible. And then really with utilizing the existing curb cut at West Main Street was a priority of ours. But we can go down to a 25-foot entrance, you know, in-and-out entrance into the site and gain back another 150 square feet there as well. So it was really just more, you know, engineering it to look at it and see where, without reducing square footage of the new building or without taking any of the parking away, which locations we would be able to reclaim a little bit of impervious area.
So did planning review your reduction of the entrance and exit?
No, so this actually was something we put together just as we were looking at it for discussion purposes for this meeting. Because with, really, it was because with going that route, if that were the case, we could eliminate the need for a variance for the second item, which would be the 50% landscape.
Right, but unless the planning board approved that, correct? Otherwise, you'd be coming back here, because what you're proposing on this new revised plan wouldn't be acceptable to the planning board. They might have additional comments, correct?
Yeah, and I think it was, we wanted to look at it to see what option would be available if we were to try to find locations and really calculate to see, because of how close we were with the 50% coverage, if we, if the option was still to move forward with the variance for the 50% coverage, we are just barely under that, with that being 49.2% with the original site plan that was submitted. But a note that we're looking at is, I believe with the, with the original option, which is the current site plan without the revisions, we're at 50.8% impervious surface on the site. And that would still be, if we were going forward with that option, a one-third reduction from the, what's now currently, or before the buildings were removed, was a 77.8% impervious surface area on that property. So we would still, moving forward with the base plan, be reducing that current site from its 77.8% impervious down to 50.8. So it would still be a drastic reduction from what is currently on site.
Right, but the point I'm simply making is it's purporting to put the zoning board in a position that the planning board may have important opinion regarding a reduction of the entrance and exit way.
If I could comment on that, Mr. Dandy? The 25-foot curb cut, two things. One is that curb cut was placed there by the DOT. When they improved this area, we had originally included a plan that actually increased it. We looked at it again and realized that there was no reason to increase it. In fact, the area that's now being reclaimed creates the more green space. creates the more green space along the frontage of the property, which is the goal of the zoning there, and having more landscaping as you enter downtown from the west. And so that curb cut was put there by the New York State DOT. It is a currently existing curb cut that they placed where it needed to be based on the proximity of the intersection. And also the town code requires a minimum twenty-five foot curb cut, which is what we now have. So it does meet the code.
It may meet the code, but planning may have comments regarding same.
Correct. We're not asking for any relief regarding the entrance at all.
Is, planning hasn't viewed a reduction in the driveway. Next, I just want to get back to the square footage of the building. In all the records I reviewed, I have no evidence that the prior buildings totaled two thousand six hundred and X number of square feet. Instead, actually, I have the short form environmental assessment form, which recites nineteen hundred and ninety-two square feet. And I knew I got that number somewhere. But that was completed by Mr. Sanlooski in the short environmental assessment form. Page one.
Correct. That did not include the wooden porch and the open porch, which as you know are included as part of the building whenever it comes to setbacks and coverage under zoning. Not a concrete patio, that's exempt, but wooden porches and the like are included. So that initial calculation of the building is correct. However, the coverage includes those other two areas, which increase the footage to what's, what was reported by Jeffrey earlier.
Heather, you have anything?
No, no. And I mean, this was discussed with the planning board. That's how we got to the point where denial letter was issued, and it's before the zoning board, so.
I'm sorry, Heather, what?
The application was discussed with the planning board. And obviously, you know, the existing curb cut, they didn't really have any comments on. But I did note that any changes to the curb cut would require review and approval from the DOT because it's a state road.
So Heather, I'm looking at an aerial that was part of your report. I'm not seeing porches.
It's, so there's a small house all the way proximate to the river.
I see the small house.
There's a roof over porch. And then there's a small wooden plat that's hidden in the shadow of the main building that faces the street. If you, I think it's easier to look.
Are you of the opinion that that totals nearly seven hundred square feet of area?
I actually just added up the square footages on the survey, which is probably the most accurate way to assess the property. There are no dimensions for the wooden patio. But based on the wood, the one-story, which is sixteen by twenty point five, the one-story frame, which is approximately eighteen point two by ninety-one point three, plus the one-story frame house, I got it to be about twenty-three hundred square feet, and that's not including the porch stoop and the wooden patio. But I'm neither an engineer or an architect, so I'm not going to certify those numbers. It's just an estimate.
And Heather, are you aware whether or not there was a letter pre-existing use for those improvements you just identified?
The letter pre-existing use dated May nineteenth, nineteen ninety-three, were for a frame office, frame garage, and frame bungalow. I don't have the survey that was submitted with the LPU application.
So whether or not the.
I would like to, but.
Roofed over portions and patios you're talking about, you can't tell me if those were legally existent?
No, and really the property owner or the representatives of the application should be the ones to answer that.
Marty, do you know anything about the county piece next to it?
The canopy's where?
Well, Suffolk County owns the piece adjacent to it, to the east.
Okay.
Do you know anything about it? How they took it? Why they took it?
I have no idea. My guess would be that the county purchased it because it was on the riverfront for, you know, for.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was taken for a tax sale or whatever.
Yeah, I would assume so. And it's, you know, realistically, I mean, I think that they should get a notice because the problem we had here was that vagrants were breaking into this building. Every time it was boarded up and locked up, and they kept moving into it. So we finally demolished it when we got the notice from the town. And unfortunately, I think some of them now have tents in the county property. So that's really a derelict property.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's good. I can live with that.
Good. I think we've had enough discussion. Marty, what we'd like to do, we'd like to get an opinion from planning about the reduction on the entrance to the property. So we'll adjourn it for two weeks and we'll make the reserve decision on the next meeting.
Right. I would just like to add though, however, we're not reducing the entrance. We were increasing the entrance, which we decided not to do. So the existing entrance, as Heather had mentioned, is existing per the DOT standard and the town standard, and it's going to remain. If we had widened it, as Heather had said, it would require a permit from the DOT, which we are no longer seeking.
Marty, you submitted a site plan to the planning board with a different entrance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the zoning board is simply stating they want an opinion from the planning board if this, and I know you don't like the word reduced, the reduced concept for the entrance and exit is the planning board is good with because it's different. The site plan was presented to them as a result of the site plan. The variance relief came to this zoning board. If planning board's going to have an issue there, then we're talking about different numbers yet again.
We have no issue with that. We're confident with the fact that it does meet the town code. It does meet the DOT standard. It does increase the landscaping and the intent of the code along the corridor approaching downtown from the west. And it does reduce the amount of impervious surface and brings us in compliance with the fifty percent landscaping, totally eliminating one of the required reliefs. So therefore, we're absolutely good with that.
Great. Someone make a motion here. Let's move this thing along, please.
Make a motion, adjourn us for two weeks.
What's the date, Heather?
October ninth.
Make it a reserve decision.
Aye.
Hold on. Ninth, okay?
October ninth.
Okay, we have a move in a second. Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mr. Zewski. Mr. Zewski.
Danny.
We lost Danny.
He's up there. I just.
There we go. Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
Aye, okay. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Philip.
Aye.
I vote aye. So we'll see you in two weeks, wherever you are. And we'll have a reserve decision for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move this thing along here, folks.
All right. The last appeal of the night is appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero three one. Doreen Stone O'Hare, thirty-one Nautical Drive, Riverhead. Suffolk County Tax Net Number six hundred dash fourteen dash one dash thirty-five. Residence A forty zoning for a proposed two-story, single-family dwelling. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code chapter three zero one dash eleven, where proposed front setback is twenty-six point three feet. Minimum required is fifty feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-one point seven feet. Minimum required is sixty feet.
Who's going to speak to this, Vance?
Yep.
Are you a lawyer?
No, sir. I do.
State your name and address, please.
John Cook, twenty Sandalwood Lane, Riverhead, New York.
Welcome. Please present.
We're looking for relief for front and rear yard setback to build a new home. For the client, Doreen O'Hare. I'm the builder for the client. Sublime contracting. We're pretty much building the house back. The front yard is staying where it currently is, and the side yards are staying where they currently are. And we're going to be encroaching to the rear yard from what the existing dwelling currently is. We have Health Department approval for a new AI system in the front yard. Pretty much it. Looking to tear down the existing house and build a new house in the same spot.
How much bigger is the new house going to be?
The first floor lot coverage is about three hundred and fifty square feet larger than the existing first floor because we're bumping out the back. And the second floor, there's currently no second floor on the existing house. It's about eight hundred square feet with three hundred square foot roof deck that comes off of that. A total of about two thousand square feet.
What's the distance from the back of the new house to the rear yard?
Thirty-one point seven. It's currently forty-one point seven. So we're building ten feet further back. Staying, building the house back to where it is in the front currently and the side yard setbacks. So they meet, they meet town code on the side yard.
And the front yard staying the same or it's changing?
It stays right where the existing house is. But of course, it's all the town zoning in that area, front yard, rear yard setbacks have changed over the years. So yeah, we're seeking relief for the front yard as well.
Has any discussion been made with any of the neighbors?
No, sir. We do have some neighbors here who I went over, information.
So I'd want to know if the neighbors favor it, if they are okay with it?
Yes, from what we gather, everybody is okay with this.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board here? Would you like to speak at the mic just for a short brief moment? Who wants to speak, please? Come on, you can do it.
Come on, earn your money.
Again, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Lawrence Stabler, twenty-eight Wood Hollow Road, Great River, New York. Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add, and we discussed this out in the halls, we were just concerned a little bit about the privacy issue that would come from a rear setback advancement toward the, because we're in the property right behind it. So now it's a two-story house and, you know, the concept of somebody like looking over into your yard, that's all we had. So we were just going to wonder if we could get a little, maybe some trees put up or something like that.
Aren't there trees back there?
Yeah, with the amount of, the amount of work that needs to be done on the property, there's, right now, there's just basically vines and shrubs and stuff. So we're going to clean that all out. And to the best of my knowledge, my client is going to be planting some new evergreens along the back of the fence, which will grow and eventually provide privacy for both dwellings.
Is there anyone on the streaming that would like to talk about this variance? Anybody else have any questions?
How big are the arbivides going to be in the back?
Six to eight foot. And the way the property is set, it's high in the back, and the property drops off to the front. So a couple of years, there'll be ample twelve, thirteen feet. They grow pretty fast.
Sir, are you adverse to putting that in if we happen to grant this? Would you, yeah, as a condition?
Absolutely.
Contingent on that? Are your clients going to line the back fence with?
Absolutely. I don't see a problem with that.
Some arbivides that are going to, that are going to be planted?
Arbivides or some Leyland cypresses or something of that nature, yeah.
Yeah, either that or a green giant, something of that.
The green giants grow fast.
Sure.
Very fast. Yeah, excellent.
Can I, can I say something, please?
Would your client be able?
I think the homeowner's on if you want to swear her in.
Oh.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, homeowner.
Hi, how are you?
Please raise your right hand.
Yeah, if you're going to speak, thank you.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Doreen Stone, thirty-one Nautical Drive in Riverhead, Ben.
Okay. What do you have to say?
Couple of things. The neighbor directly to our rear is Michael Tillman. I believe the neighbor that spoke is Catty Corner behind us. But regardless, we are going to do some landscaping in the back to increase the privacy for the neighbors and for us. Because the lots in Reeves Park are so small, you really need some lining between the properties to provide that privacy. And we are absolutely going to do that.
Are you okay with making that a condition here tonight towards granting it?
Absolutely would.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Let's move it on.
How high you want to make those arbivides, minimum planted?
Six to eight. Six to eight feet's good because if they use the green giants or whatever they're called, they'll grow fast.
You got it, Josh?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number two zero two five dash zero three one, I move that the appeal of Doreen Stone O'Hare, thirty-one Nautical Drive, Riverhead, SCTM Number six hundred dash fourteen dash one dash thirty-five, residence A forty, RA forty zoning. Variance is endo relief, variances endo relief from town code chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed front setback is twenty-six point three feet, minimum required is fifty feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-one point seven feet, minimum required sixty feet, be granted, subject to the homeowner agreeing to plant some arbivides, namely green giants preferably in the six to eight foot height across the back fence, the rear fence, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Moving second. Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mr. Zewski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Godzilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you're going to grant that. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Japanese love you.
And just a note, we didn't receive the minutes from the September eleventh meeting yet. When we receive them, I will circulate them to the board and we can adopt them at the next meeting.
Then.
Yep.
Anything else?
Adjourn.
So the next meeting date is October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion to close?
That's Lily's birthday.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All favor to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.